Well, I will call any one of them. Anything more on the agenda? I'm just, I'll bring it up, uh, I'm gonna move in, I'm gonna talk a little bit about trucks for. Brad there?
You there Brad?
Yep, I'm here.
Do you have anything for us, or, well, give me a minute here, I'll go approve the agenda in the minutes here first.
Uh, second.
Motion made in second, who, you have all those in favor, say five, say nine, both, sign, minutes.
A motion to three minutes.
Okay. My motion was made in second to approve the minutes as written, all those in favor, say five, say nine. Okay, you got anything for us on the hospital thing? Brad, I got Bruce. Is here, if we got any questions on that.
Okay, so you guys went through the, the hearing process, and I assume, uh, Bruce filled in on some of the next steps. I, I mailed the plat, the final plat, annexation and the property plat to you guys, uh, yesterday. And so you should get that, you know, hopefully tomorrow or Thursday.
Okay.
And, uh, so those are ready for signatures. And then, once you have all the signatures on those, just go ahead and record those. Uh, record the annexation plat first, and then, uh, the property plat after that.
Well, Bruce will handle that, I'm sure he's well aware.
Yep, so that's, that's all I have on the hospital project. Yeah, everything's going well there, the, we're finalizing some, some plans for the contractors, so they can go out for, uh, quotes for the work.
You have anything, Ben, that you need to talk about?
I don't, um, yeah, does anybody have any questions up here? If not, I don't have anything to add.
Anything for you, Bruce, sir?
Bill, we'll get through this process, so when we get the annexation thing, get the plat from Brad, we want to get that recorded right away. Cause it's gonna take you a couple days to get all that stuff at least from the zoning approved inside, we gotta get the owners up here to sign. So it'll be out, and then we'll get that done.
You just do that at your place, I mean.
We do it wherever, yeah, it's probably coming here is all we think.
Coming to City Hall.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else having anything to ask? Yes, we got it under control, Brad? Sounds like.
Yeah, yeah, sounds good. If anything comes up, I'll let you know, but, uh, things are looking good there, and, uh, on the sewer project, we're just working on our proposal, uh, for that RFQ.
Oh, yeah.
So, so nothing, nothing on that front, just, uh, working on that, so.
Okay, well, we'll take care of that, thank you.
Okay, yep, thank you.
You gotta do anything with?
Nope.
Record, okay.
We're good.
Well, yes.
Yeah, I think we're good then, and I talked to Donnie, it was getting fun, but, I talked to these guys too, about eventually, they're gonna work with you, uh, infusion or somebody else to get that, uh, your inspector thing lined up. I talked to you guys when I first came in here about that, for your building inspector and stuff that, you know, they're doing in the city, cause we don't have anybody qualified to do that. And they do that, and they have to do that before, so that, we'll get that taken care of, so you don't have to worry about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not really reasonable that we have the expertise in proving building permit for a size like that, so. Like, they've hired outside third parties to come in and help do that.
Yeah, we can.
It, it's almost redundant, because the North Dakota Department of Health approves every inch of that building. So, they're with us the entire way.
Yeah, yeah.
And we can't do anything without their, you know, okay, so.
No, it's false.
Anyway, they'll take care of that issue for the city anyway, you know.
I'll call you later.
Yeah, and it is inspecting building, or some, you know, stupid thing like that, so I'm gonna take care of more of the city.
Very good, okay.
That's it, good, I don't have anything else.
Okay, alright, I'll have that signed tonight, then.
Yeah, get that all signed and stuff, and when you get the plat, let me know. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you guys, thanks. Are you visiting or delegating?
Just to come see if there's anything that needs to do for the city, I mean, we haven't, I haven't already this spring, cross your fingers.
So, we're gonna get a spring?
Well, we thought, that wasn't the plan last fall. We'll see, cause I remember, it normally is gonna be like one last couple days of school, but we'll see if it seems like it's. You might just have to push it up, but.
Yeah, it snowed, that's, that'd be good, yeah, like whenever.
Yeah, usually, it was gonna be last couple days of school, and they do, they don't have a lot to do that last.
Yeah, right.
Um, it really depends on whether it's the last week, we'll have to decide if we get the paper.
Yes.
There will probably be, I know there's quite a few letters that went out last summer for some bad tree, but I don't know if a lot of it got out, so. Reader's alert, tell me that.
Uh, probably should. Who's got the list of them?
I do.
Oh.
Amanda, yeah.
I suppose.
Missed the email back, too much, so, or to her, from her, um, because I knew the letter I had didn't have the terms. Compters on it, but I don't remember, maybe she sent me back an email, but I don't remember it.
Um, we, uh, yeah, maybe touch base with her, and most we should go look to make sure they didn't take them out before we send letters.
Yeah, but I'll have to look a little bit, and I can, I mean, we can wait until after the election and, you know, start that again.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Not lacking myself, this has been injured.
Yeah, yeah, no, it is, it has been that, so, well, that's it. Move on. Old business, all right, we got that audit report from the state, did everybody get a chance to look at that or understand it, or? If you helped with that quite a bit, I think it's, I know they're just kinda got the same recommendations we got two years ago. It's kinda hard to do everything they want in our little, our little group here, it's just, you don't have enough, so. That's part of what you see in the back, you know, you've seen all this banking info, so that's coming out just so we can see it, so that's one way to, okay, but. You know, get a check by more than one, or whatever you wanna call it, so.
Having more than one set of eyes on it, for accountability and transparency and everything like that.
Well, uh, really nothing other than we had to look at it, and I think, what is it, uh? Oh, there was another couple little things, it wasn't.
Um, well, they mentioned having, I guess, like more staff in the office part, which you've complied with, and they took note of that, and basically, just like the financials and making sure. Um, you know, everything's on the up and up, and also, I guess, I remember one thing Man was filling out, we were kinda working together, like, if there's any issues, like. See, I guess, fraud, or any hacking, or anything like that, like, security features everywhere, and. Kinda like what our plan might be, if God forbid that ever happened, and stuff like that, but, you know, it sounded like, when they gave us the verbal recommendation, it was really not any different than the last time, everything seems to be going well, and. They took notice of some of the changes we've made, and just recommended for transparency and everything. You know, just work on this, and they understand, and we understand that, like, we'll just work on it.
Their biggest concern is if somebody's getting away with money or something.
Yes, that, that is their very biggest concern.
Hard to do when you, you need two people signing checks, so it's pretty hard to.
Yeah, but they dig, or do they dig?
Yeah. And like I say, you're there, and she's there, and all of you are, both of them something, so, I guess that's all we need more. We're, we're trying to comply with this.
Yeah, yeah, we're working towards it, and they appreciate that.
And then, uh. Our old business, I guess, is the election. I don't know where we're at, apparently, there's only one person put in for the park board?
Yeah, only one person put in, so that's the official order that will appear on the ballot, and, and then, I guess, of course, on the day of, there could be write-ins.
Get the write-in.
Yeah, but that's how it's gonna appear on your ballot.
Yeah, guy, basically what they do is if you don't know where I'm at, write-ins refuse, then just go around and they'll ask you. Yeah. And point them, then. Yeah. Right, so, I mean, that's, you know. You got four people running for three positions, that's actually surprising, cause it looked like we weren't even getting anybody for part.
Yeah, there was some, there was some worry, we were trying to figure out, okay. How does this work?
Anybody else have no reason? I'll move on to new, uh, where are we, we're going to that, second reading then for the builders.
I have some people second reading.
Oh. Second? I'll say. Okay, motion been made in second, and approve the second read for the building condition, the third building condition annexation, so all those in favor, say five, say nine. Both, say the sign, carry. Okay, crack sealings, uh. We got, see, I didn't, he gave us two numbers this time, I guess we're, must've been a little bit cheaper, we did the. Couple cents cheaper, you know, that we did twenty thousand dollars, so. But I guess in the past, we've been doing, uh, ten thousand bought every year, and wanted, we shouldn't keep that. How long does this last, I mean, to do this chip ceiling, and by the time we get around to do it, cause this stuff can be wore out. Well, we've just been trying to do parts of town every year, is what it amounts, it's just trying to keep water from getting under the street, and popping them up, you know, that's what it is. Just kinda prevent it, maybe, so we need to do more, to recover more of the ground, so by the time it comes around to that, the next time, that, that's not deteriorating, but nothing. Yeah, it's just, well, summer's so bad, you don't do them, you know, well, they're pretty good about that, I mean, it's much lighter.
Yeah, they are.
By your weather, how much?
There's something allocated, they, they go wrong.
Yeah, they just leave it, I mean, they are good about that, which is fair, we're. Well, I don't know, uh. I know there's sure a lot of holes showing up on Fifth there, from about the bowling alley south of the highway, that's the.
That's a bad road.
Bad, a lot of holes, I mean, they're gonna have to do a lot of that bank stuff.
Oh, yeah.
And we wanted, for, for, now, I'm not talking about that contract, it comes in. Yeah. Well, we got, we do it, yeah. It's gotta bear in mind if we're gonna do this, the sewer project.
Those guys are pretty much old, anything that's gonna be like, two or three bags, you know, to fill, wait, wait on it, you know. I mean, if they're filling up holes that they shouldn't be, you know, like, uh, I know along the bowling alley, they wasted. That was kind of unnecessary, because the whole town is eating away from the curb, you know, it's rusted up, well, they didn't need to fill that in, because we could've got some pot mix when they were here.
Yeah.
Fix that.
I'm just trying to get a feel if we're thinking about doing, I mean, if we're gonna back off on fixing some of these spots, maybe we need to do more chip and sealing. Well, we gotta remember, next year, you know, we're gonna need a million bucks for that, if we're gonna do that sewer, all that sewer project we got, the buck, you know, the grant we got, we gotta have a little over a million dollars of our own, so. We wanna keep that in mind, now, I haven't heard anything on Prairie Dog, I haven't heard a word, if there's gonna be.
We've been doing, uh, like, ten thousand, ten thousand, and ever since, I was on the council back in the nineties, and we were doing ten thousand of them, and, and just. I would, like, I've been going around town and finding the best spots for them guys to do their ten thousand, but if you guys wanna.
Again.
Bump it up.
That, we have authority, when, when I was on the council, it was forty years, we crack seal one year out of that, is all, that's all the time I could get them to do it.
I wasn't on there then.
No, no, but I mean, they, they didn't crack seal every year. No, no, I, I, I finally come to do one year when I was on the council.
Oh, jeez.
So, I mean, we, we.
Well, that's what happened then.
We really got behind.
Got behind.
Yeah.
Cause we were doing good, ten thousand feet every year, you know.
Yes, so, I mean, we, there, but we missed those years, I, I got it to do it, cause I had them come to the airport then. So. Now, maybe we'll stay with the ten thousand. Yeah, I don't see that, how long are we gonna do more, we'll have to, like I said, we don't know where we're at yet. Firstly, I think, uh, as far as fixing streets and stuff.
Well, you can just, lately, we've been going around the city, and marking what street to do for them, you know. The worst ones, where the water is actually running into cracks the way.
Yeah.
They've been, they've been doing a good job grinding them out.
Yeah, they do, ball mountains.
But, uh.
So.
I just was kinda upset on a couple of roads that I know they did last year.
I'll talk to them.
That was almost like it was a different material.
Yeah.
You know.
I'll, I'll find out about that.
Yeah.
Okay, I gotta call them, but the airport too, so I'll talk to them tomorrow.
Cause the old stuff, they use the good stuff, it's why I'm kidding you, that crack could open up like.
Yeah, they should be doing this, this early in the spring.
And, and it wouldn't open up at all, it would just, that stuff would stretch, and water could go down.
Yeah, yeah. I'll jump them on, so, just a matter, how much do we wanna do it?
And that might be more expensive stuff, I don't know.
It is more expensive, yeah.
Than other stuff?
Yeah.
It might be.
We've had it used at the airport a couple of times, and it's, you, you gotta pay a little more for it, so all I, I'll ask, but if you're going on a dollar amount, it doesn't really matter.
And I think they had trouble heating that up, compared to the.
Oh, no, you never did off the airport.
But of course, they always come when it's snowing, all of this.
Yeah.
You know, that's the other part, I hear.
That's the good thing, is like, get them here, same, they'll do it the same time here for the airport, that's an assumption.
Right, yeah. It's nice that they come in the spring, they're all wide open, it's easy to see.
Yeah, fill up most of them, come back, yeah, but they can't have water, you know.
No, I know, but.
Yeah, that's the trouble.
It's tough either way.
Right now, it's impossible, you know, you just can't, so, just a matter of how much we wanna do, I guess.
Yeah.
Well, let's see, just, go back, look, look at your, uh, ending thing, what do we have? Finally, we got just about a hundred and forty streets.
That's just left in there?
That's what's in there now, it's, oh, yeah. Fun balance, yeah. What else we got down there? We got the ARPA, which can be used for that kinda stuff, of, I'm not mistaken, so I mean, we've got, uh, I think it was more your, not for street, but for the sewers.
Sewers. They usually give you, uh, usually get some kind of funding for the airport when you do it, or do you just pay it out of your?
No, we get, uh, the state will pay.
State, well, the state takes in, okay.
They pay half.
I was wondering what, how that works.
Yeah. See, that's a nice, like, if I repay, get some feds involved, they pay ninety percent, or the state pays five, and we pay five, so it's, it's, it doesn't cost us that much locally. But the project, I wish we could get something like that to town here on the streets.
That'd be nice.
I mean, you know, like I say, I gotta remember, next year, we're, we're gonna need a bunch of money next year too, if, if we do the sewer thing, so, you know, we wanna be careful what we spend. Yeah, to save a little bit of this too possibly, or, or, I mean, how, how, how do you think we are really as far as doing big patches, like, with, you know, uh. Big out, you know, big out like we have been with the autogram forks, or we, is there much we need to do this year, or?
Yeah, but, yeah, can we afford it?
That's what I mean. Again, I think that's something, we need to wait until, by the spring, I mean, if they start busting out really bad, yeah, we'd have to fix them, and some of these.
All I know is, the sewer fix up, to get, fix one of the streets for sure, is a bad.
Probably two, I mean, two of them. Two of them, yeah, then we won't worry about.
Down on, uh, seven.
Yeah.
That's gotta be done.
So, with, with those, so those two, we don't worry about, they've just gotta be the way they are until next year.
Yeah, so.
You got the second one, yeah.
So we'll just quit that, bypass over.
Yeah.
And then fix some other ones, I know there's. You know, like, I had them just go and fill up two spots with, uh, crush. Yeah, Jeremy's, and then down by the park. And, uh, I don't know if we wanna put asphalt in there, or, or just keep putting that crushed in there.
I, it's, it's sinking, isn't it, it's, I mean.
Well, yeah, that's why I hate being a monkey with it.
I mean, I would just use the crush, cause why not, I mean, it's, we got that, it don't cost us nothing, so.
No, no.
I mean. I mean, we better go with the ten thousand, what do you, yeah, do we want, you think you wanna do ten or twenty at crack sealings?
I'd rather do this ten.
Well, and if something shows, we can maybe have a new small one here.
Right.
We have to have a little bit, we could.
I make a motion that we, uh, hire hundred percent of them.
Okay.
Many of them.
But ten thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And say, so, so, motion made exactly, then do, hires, hires, I remember, need ten thousand dollars of the crack sealings. Both, they were saying the five percent, I. Both, sign, motion carry. Okay, the court aid. This is true, but I guess for those in the state. Or it is, what would you call it, fundraising lottery, I don't know what to call lottery, but, throwing away a couple motorcycles.
It's a raffle.
Raffle, I guess, yeah, and, and they did add another cat prize, for a total of thirty four thousand. Instead of what it shows. This. I don't wanna say this, this doesn't obligate us to anything, I mean, if there's something pops up, we can rescind this, I mean, this is the state, cause. I got a little problem with these first two, under these two motorcycles, valued at eight thousand, so they gotta be a lot more than that, than I, but that's.
Yeah, I understand that.
I just looked up that twenty twenty, it's supposed to be eighty-three, and it's, it's going for like right around nine thousand.
Really?
In between eight, high eight and ten.
Well, I may probably give them a deal, be, it's what it's for, so, okay, I just surprises me, I don't know you get by on any kind of motorcycle that cheap anymore, so. So, okay, we need to, I have a motion. But we just acknowledge, no, we, I have a motion on this one.
Yeah, you have to prove it, I believe, before the next steps can happen.
We're gonna need a motion.
Make motion to approve the.
Oh, motion made is a second. Yeah, motion been made is second, and approve the court aid, wrap all those papers, say five, say nine. Both, say the sign. Okay, uh. Bring up, uh, one. Issues with the trucks, we got a couple of them here, and I, what have you did with the carburetor on that one, Scott?
We've got it. The rebuild put in it.
You did what?
I believe there was a rebuild put back in it.
Who, who did that? Where did that come from?
Did when he was here.
Okay, well, it's working now.
Yeah, I believe so.
What's this on? One of our trucks.
On the yellow one, right?
Yeah, truck.
Yeah.
Well, and you could've used it on Saturday, yes, well, why didn't you?
It's the misplanning.
And the other one, you said you can't run, but you don't have a lining in, or?
Yeah, you know, there's some kind of hockey ring stuff in there, I believe, just sticks in there.
But I thought it was missing on the right side, or on the sides.
On the back it is, on the back end it's missing, and it's side.
Well, we should get someone, get it in there then, so they're usable.
I, I tarp them every year I was on there, and, I mean, and I loved it, because you don't even get the box even burnt way up, and then the snow is gone.
I think that's.
The best stuff that.
Sliding ship.
I have, I had then the, and the bottom gun.
Oh.
There's nothing in there.
Yeah.
When you dump it. That blue turp would last the whole season too, that.
Just one.
I just got it uptown, it's just a seal.
Yeah.
I mean, I used, uh, I, I used one by it down in the corners, and then when I rolled it up the side, I put one by his. With just a, drilled with a drill and a self-tapping.
Yeah, yeah.
It wasn't that big a deal, I did it myself, Jeremy brought me, couldn't help me, and, well, he, knees were so bad.
Yeah, yeah. Well, what, the plastic, expensive?
No.
Huh? I was wondering if that plastic wasn't expensive, that white plastic.
Well, I put, I put, uh, the one in from, uh, Bruce Tuvner, I think it was, gave me a lot of a semi that he had, that.
Oh, yeah.
They replace that once in a while for green.
They get broke, they can't.
But it, it was pretty good shape when I got it, I put it in two of the trucks, I think, maybe, is there one in the yellow truck too?
Yeah, there's some in the yellow one.
Is there?
Pretty thick now.
But anyways, probably pretty well tore up from hauling, dropping, uh, from the digging the sewers up and stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
That's kinda hard on it, that's why I just soon put plastic in, take the plastic out in spring.
Throw it away.
Throw it away.
I think they bought ten bucks a piece on it.
No, it's not very much.
No. No, well, anyway, do that, cause otherwise, I think we need to look at renting, if we have to, I mean, this haul on one truck is don't get.
No, but the, the reason why I mentioned the turf is, is you could use the turf the whole year, no matter how the snow was, it was.
Yeah.
You know, if it come out of there, it was nice.
Yeah. Well, better plan on doing that next year.
Let me, I'll show you what I did next year, just to get it done before the storm.
Yeah. When you cleaned snow behind the bank yesterday, where'd you put it? Um, down alleyway, by the west side of Memorial Building.
Yeah, I was putting it in our pile that we had on the street there, in the grocery stores in there.
Who put that pile?
I don't know if you put that there, it was private contractor.
We had a pile, put southwest corner of the Memorial Building, and nobody, nobody knows who did it, and it started on the west side. Yeah, well, but, uh, yesterday, Wolski called me, and I had Scott go move it, cause the west side of the hot alley was blocked.
Yeah.
And, and the cars couldn't get out, so we opened that up, and then somebody come and put all the snow on that corner, when the school bus comes up there, you know, they got classes in there, they couldn't get in. If I don't think they can even get in the door, cause it was piled up there, so, the county called me this morning, and then asked about it, so I have Scott and Bruce then haul it out today, finally. And no, and I've been, I talked to Millers, I talked to everybody I could think that would've did it.
Who, who cleans the bank?
Glenn does. Glenn, but he comes.
He piles it on the bank.
He piles it on the bank, yeah, and he, and he.
As I said, he has a own pile.
Yeah, and then he got a whole city today, and told, told city about the pile, he said, somebody piled some snow there, but nobody owns up to it, we don't know who did it.
Nobody.
No, we, we're trying to get it stopped, but we don't know who did it.
I didn't have who did it, with all the calls we made.
Yeah. So.
Good thing it's out of there.
Yeah, we got it out of there now, so.
Yeah, well, we're trying to stop this, and it doesn't happen again.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks like we get another, I tell you what, Scott, we get three inches over the weekend, they're gonna get, and just sit on the streets. I would say tomorrow, if it gets fairly warm, I'd get, get that blade out and try and get some of that sludge knocked off the streets, so that people are really complaining, you know what?
Yeah, yeah, they got that rubber.
Rubber, yeah, I don't think you wanna use the blade, cause you're gonna hook too much shit with that, you know, so.
Be going through the windshield.
Yeah, of course, it can't hurt a second time anymore, can we?
I don't know, like, the, break the glass very bad. I don't know, the break the glass very bad.
Oh, yeah, it's just shattered it. Yeah, it's, there's, I don't know how we split your tracks. Jesus, you better get all the Butler to get on that.
Yeah, we did already.
All right, and how about your steering column in your payload?
Uh, they called on that today, actually, um. I was supposed to call them back, burn information, I forgot to. Um, they should have burn information on that.
Don't know, it's just flops all over.
Yeah, that's been like that for a long time. It's gotta be fixed before something major happens, then you can't drive it at all.
Yeah, it's got to be a pretty important, that snowy road part, yeah, yeah. Well, anybody else have any new business?
So, I ordered fifty water meters. Meter replacement program. We won't be here till June, July, they said, and then uh, mid co-diving is still trying to find a schedule and time for us.
I just think we should replace water meters as they go, I don't, you know, what were you planning on doing, putting all fifty in? I mean, I think those water meters should be used and, oh, save mine when I'll come and put a new one in in our. Okay, I I think just keep doing it that way. Uh, when I put those in, he told me they'd last around fourteen to fifteen years. But he said, if you put all in batteries. And the boxes inside the house, up in the floor joists, they'll, they might last from seventeen to twenty years. So, I think we do just keep using them and. You know, I not take good ones that are reading okay.
I I don't believe you're pushing your seventeen, cause I was working for Glenn when you did that. I've been on Mintford, sat down there seventeen years now.
Well, I mean, he said seventeen to twenty, so it's gotta be getting old.
But no, there's no sense, just go take fifty thousand and change them out.
No, no, but this, that's a spendy deal.
Yeah.
I don't know what your new ones are, and you know, about. Cause we've got six hundred on, six hundred over six hundred, I think it's down.
Did that two inch one come in yet, for the common?
Yep.
Yeah.
That sitting, waiting to get installed.
Well. Financial, I.
We're getting them from Northern.
But you have any questions on the funding control? Pay some bills. You know, we might have to tell Amanda here that we might not invite her to any more meetings, since when she was here last time, it was a two hour meeting. Captain comes, and it's not much over half an hour.
Well, I already guessed that in my mind, that's uh, when my wife asked me, what, what happened?
Okay.
What did uh, like Peterson, he helped you with work over there on that, I mean, when he pumped, he pumped it out twice?
Yeah.
Yeah, he was there pretty much all day.
Many helped me install it.
Yeah, alright, okay.
That little station.
Oh, yeah, okay. So when it slows down, when you think you're gonna get a chance to fix that, stuff like it's smaller. The sewer by the school, that's bothering, that you gotta be there every day? There is plugs, I know there's, there are eight inch plugs at the uh, pool. But you can, you can stop and cut that little lip off.
Yeah, yeah, even if you get it quick.
Did you look at that signal?
Yes.
Yeah.
It looks to me if you just put the plugs in it, it would take you about fifteen minutes, cut that lip off.
Right, that would probably help, I'll pick that stuff up and get it.
Yeah. As I told, if you got a rough spot over there by the north of the school, in that alleyway, I've got some of that glassboard. Some leftover stuff that you could probably put it in there.
Yeah.
And then just make some cement up and throw it behind it, and make that smooth transition.
I never thought of that, I got some of that home too, bow it around there.
Yeah, and then you put your cement behind it?
Yeah, yeah. That would, the stuff that crews right around.
Probably get that done, not do that every day.
Grow up to Richie King, get some, he's got all of it out there.
Well, that's the old, the old boards off the hockey rink.
Right.
I'm talking that glassboard that you put on the walls, you know, that little.
I'm talking about the stuff from the hockey rink that lasts forever down.
I use that for forms for spent.
Oh, eight things.
You know, so you put it in kitchens, commercial kitchens and stuff?
I don't know. Probably last and get cement behind it. Yeah, needs the, needs something like.
If you can get it, it's not even that smooth transition. Yeah.
Cause they could just take a zazzle down there and cut that.
Yes, no.
You got, you have a plug for, do you wanna plug something?
As I said, I know there's two of them at the rink, or at the pool.
Yeah, yeah.
Get them from the pool. If you need, like I said, give me a call if you decide to do it, give me a call. I can get a hold of, get some keys and get, get into that, I know where they're at, they should be still there. Hopefully, I haven't thrown it away. Yeah, ours got away on. Ours got away, we had them there, but Chris cleans shop, I'll do them all. This is what happened. Well, you didn't know what they were. Anyway. Pay some bills. Motion made, second, pay the bills, all the favors in by the same eye. Anybody got anything else?
I just wanted to add on that, um, we have training on Friday with Ferguson for the new meters and the app-based programs. That's all. Yeah, yeah, so the four of us are gonna be in the office for, did they say hello? Like an hour or so, and we're just doing training on that, so, I'd give you guys a heads up. So, yeah, try that eventually.
What are you guys getting a new reader too?
It's just uh, bottom base.
Oh.
We don't have a backup issue again.
Yeah.
Well, nothing else, but I guess.
Here, we set a time tonight, that the manager can try and break.